I'd like to call the Planning Commission of Ascension Parish to order for the March 12, 2014 meeting. Would the Secretary let it reflect that all members are present except Mr. Donald Sanjay and we have one empty position on the commission now? And please join me in saying pledges against the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to note that Mr. Paul Nizo has resigned from the board so that he may serve Ascension Parish in another capacity. We thank Mr. Nizo for his service with us and wish him success in all his future endeavors. And I'd also like to note that since the meeting that was going to be directly after this, the joint planning and zoning commission meeting was not advertised correctly, that meeting will not take place. We'll just have the planning commission meeting. All right. Have everyone read the minutes of the previous meeting? And do I have a motion to...
Move for approval?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next item is consent agenda. The first item is, A, affidavit of mortgage declaration of Wilford J. Onglade Senior, Fact A. Staff comment?
We don't have any comments. This is just giving the banks that are holding mortgages on these properties the last chance to come forward and say whether they approve or disapprove of the applicant buying their property.
Until there's no objection?
No.
Okay. So, the next item on the consent agenda is the affidavit of mortgage declaration for Stanley Broome property. Any comment?
No, same thing.
So, do I have a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
I'll second.
All opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The next thing is public hearing to approve or deny the following family partition. A, Edwin U. Watts Junior Property. Mr. Quinmal?
Good evening. Clint Quinmal, representing WJ Quinmal Surveyors. Ask for planning commission approval on the Edwin U. Watts family partition of Lot 1C into Lot 1C1 and Lot C2.
Any comment from the staff?
No, sir.
Have a motion? I'd like to open a public hearing for the discussion of this item. Is there anybody who'd like to comment? No one's... No sign? All right. I'd like to close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move for approval.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. The second public item for family partition is Eddie E. Webb and Carol E. Webb property. Mr. Quinmal?
Yes, this is a partial family partition. Again, one lot into two due to co-ownership. And so, family partition is the methodology we'll use for that.
Staff comment?
No comment.
I'd like to open a public hearing for discussion. Would anybody like to make a comment in the audience? Anyone? I'd like to close the public hearing. I'd like a motion from the...
Move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
All right. The next item is the ordinance for public hearing to recommend approval or denial for the parish council amendments to the Ascension Parish Unified Land Development Code. Ordinance VR 14-01, revisions to the drainage regulations in the Unified Land Development Code pertaining to erosion and sediment control. Staff?
This was introduced to you last month, requiring the reports that are required by the LPDS permits to be submitted to Ascension Parish. And then, so it's basically the same as last month, except I did make a small revision. I noticed that the wording of the previous ordinance did not mention that it is required for sites that disturb over an acre and not just a site that's over an acre. And so, that's the only difference from last month.
Any discussion here among commissioners?
Again, I'm kind of looking for, Tim, I guess, is this something that we haven't required in the past, that they submit their SWIPs?
Yeah, we require them to submit the SWIPs, but there's no requirement for them to submit the reports, the weekly reports they have to do.
And it's just something that...
The LPDS permit requires them to do the reports, but they don't require them to be submitted anywhere.
And we're just wanting this for record of a property that was developed, to make sure that it...
Uh, yeah, yeah. Basically, so we can spot check that the reports, inspections are being performed.
In this window of time that we're reviewing, I'm going to assume there's a window of time to reply back as if there's something you're going to reject. Is that correct?
Um, sorry, I don't...
You're requesting the reports?
Yes.
Before they were responsible for completing the report, not providing the report to us, now they're going to provide a report. My question is, is there a window of time that you have the opportunity to review it and if there's something you don't like about it...
That's spelled out in the LPDS permit. They have to, if we make a comment on it, they have to address it within seven days. We don't, we're not saying that we have to make a comment on it, but if we do, they have to address it.
Yes.
Any other discussion here? I'd like to open a public hearing for comment on this item. Does anyone would like to make a comment?
Billy Agalor.
Mr. Agalor?
Thanks, gentlemen, members of the planning commission. This is really just a redundancy in paperwork. What DEQ actually requires is a SWIP plan for if you disturb anything over an acre, and it requires NOI for, you send it into the state for DEQ, state DEQ for anything over five acres. If it's under acre, the SWIP plan is on file at, if I'm doing a SWIP plan, it's on file in my office, the landowner, the general contractor, or individual person that they hired to do the SWIP plan for them and to do the inspection for them. And you can do the inspections in a number of different ways, and it's spelled out in your SWIP plan how you're going to do them. You can either do them once a month. If you do them once a month, you have to do an inspection every time it rains. But most people in South Louisiana, what they do is you can do an inspection once a week, regardless of how many times it rains during that week. And DEQ doesn't even want a copy of the inspection report. You have to have them on file, either with the SWIP plan on site and/or it can be within, at my office or whoever's office, whoever's doing it, within 45 minutes of that site. If you have it at your office, you have to have a notice on site that says who is the responsible party with their phone number. So, if the parish comes out and looks at it and there's mud all over the streets or whatever, all they have to do is go to that permit, look at that responsible party, and call them and say, "Why haven't you cleaned the streets and where's your inspection report for this week or this rain period? And we want to look at it. You need to be here in the next 45 minutes." Then they got to comply. If they don't, then violation of state law. And if we send these reports in, I mean, half the time, and Tim, I might said you, don't get me wrong, but half the time, we send in inspection reports from the testing lab on a site, and they get lost. And we'll send them in two or three times and they're lost. And the easiest thing to do is to have these things on file in our office. If they got a problem, all they got to do is make a phone call to a person, and this is already required by state law, by DEQ, and it's already a requirement. And this is just a redundancy, and we will be sending in extra pieces of paper for nothing. Anyway, that's my comments. If y'all have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Well, it's not a redundancy of reporting. You're doing the report anyway.
We're doing the report anyway, but it doesn't have to be, it's not even sent to DEQ. And sometimes, we not doing it, we hire subcontractors to do it for them, and they keep them at their office.
Maybe Tim could remind us and remind everyone why we thought we needed to have a copy of the report. Tim?
They are required by the LPDS permits. We're not asking them to do anything else. We're just asking them to be submitted to us. We're not asking you not to keep copies of it for yourself.
No, no, we keep the copies. We have them by state law.
And, I mean, if they do get lost, you have a copy of it. I mean, I don't see what the issue really would be.
It's just having to send y'all an extra piece of paper and having to, it's just the process of having to do it and send it to y'all. And it's just an extra process that, and, and, Tim, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that y'all lose them, but these things get lost all the time, and they'll call us 15 times and ask to send them another copy of the report, which takes time, our time and effort to go send another copy of the report.
Why can't we require an electronic copy as opposed to a paper copy? Then nothing gets lost, ever.
Actually, that was my idea, that we could add that into the ordinance to say that an electronic copy will be...
Why burn themselves with paper? Let's just do it electronic. It gets filed. That doesn't take any time. And as long as you copy him and you copy yourself...
As long as our proof that, you know, we print out a copy of our emails, as long as that shows proof that we sent it to them, so we don't get a complaint that we didn't send it to them.
Yeah, maybe you copy, you just DCC yourself, and you've got a calendar, you've got everything. Could we change the deal to be an electronic copy?
Okay, yeah, sure.
That's...
Yeah, I guess, how do I, how do we do that, Ricky?
I think that if the commission just makes that as part of their motion to amend the ordinance to read, electronic submission is acceptable. I mean, do we want to limit it to only electronic or, I mean, I think that stating electronic is acceptable, or you can send paper copies, which who's doing that anymore?
I think I just have a report, correct?
Yes, sir.
By mandating one or the other, you want a report filed. Electronic is the most expedient medium, we all understand it. And obviously, you have your proof that it was done. I don't know if it's going to be important to say electronic or hand copy or whatever. You want the report.
I like the idea, electronic is permissible.
Is this, Tim, is this a reaction to something that might have happened on another site somewhere where we wasn't keeping track?
Well, not so much as that we go out and there are issues. They say that, you know, they've been doing the inspection reports and they, we've requested them, we have an issue about getting them, and then when we finally get them, they may not be accurate.
So, that's a way of keeping up with it as the project goes on?
Yeah, and it's, we'll just be spot checking them. We won't, obviously, we're not able to look at every report that comes in, but if we do see problems that keep occurring, then we'll look at the report and make sure the inspections are being done.
Okay.
Can y'all mind if I answer that? And, and, Tim, the problem with that is too, is if they're doing it on a weekly basis, you don't have to do it at every rain event. You don't have to do it once a week, and that's in state law. So, if it rains on Monday and they don't do the inspection until Saturday, you might have a Monday or Wednesday rain, and you might have sediment on the street. Well, they're not going to have that report to say that they cleaned it up, or the corrective action is to clean it up until following Monday.
Uh, yes, we understand that.
You understand that?
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be different, Cal.
I'm about to make a motion.
Right.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Agalor.
Just to clarify as well, part of the parish's MS4 permit for stormwater monitoring is that we prepare a year-end summary, and I think part of the thought behind collecting these is that now those can become part of our report, showing we are actively engaged in the community, in the development process by reviewing these stormwater inspection reports and saying, yes, they are compliant, or no, they're not, and here's the corrective actions that were taken. It's all part of our MS4 permitting process, I think, to clean it up, because we're not getting any of that today.
I think it has a great deal of value. Of course, these documents can be stored for long periods of time, downloaded to a John drive, a CD, whatever the case may be. But in an ideal world, by being stored electronically, if you had to do some research, Ctrl+F, type whatever you're looking for, bam, it'll bring you directly to it. That certainly expedites turning pages in a telephone book-sized document. So, I think that's a great deal of value.
Is there any other comment on the commission? Do you have a motion?
Well, we need to close the public...
Oh, okay, I'd like to close the public hearing. And is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? Public hearing is closed.
I'll move that. We recommend approval of the sergeant to the parish council with a change in paragraph D that says, "On the fourth line, report shall be submitted electronically to the Ascension Parish Stormwater Department."
I think we said, Rick recommended a report to be sent, and electronic is permissible.
Yeah.
Not limiting it to...
I think the discussion we had is not limited to just one meeting or the other.
Okay, then we'll say, then I'll amend that motion to say that the reports may be submitted electronically.
Yeah.
But the report shall be submitted.
Yes. A second?
Second?
I'll second that, yeah.
Can Mr. Oris second? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Is there staff report?
No, sir.
Is there engineering?
The engineering report, last month, you asked me to give an outline of our drainage impact study that we're doing, and John is going to call up that PowerPoint presentation. I'm just going to give a brief presentation. If you have any questions for me to...
Can you speak closer to the mic?
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay. So, this is the Ascension Parish Drainage Impact Study, and all the developments in the parish are required to do these studies. If you remember, a couple months ago, we were talking about the exception and for smaller sites, and that if it was, you know, an impervious area or pervious area, but that exception has been eliminated. So, any development within the parish, regardless of the size, is going to have to do one of these drainage impact studies. And all the calculations in the drainage impact study have to be done under the direction So, I gave you all the drainage impact study, and the policy is located on the Ascension Parish website, wwwascensionparish.net. It's under Departments, and then you go to the Planning and Zoning Department, and then the Planning Department, and then there, the impact study is listed under there. And then, the first three items are generally giving you the location of the site, what the existing uses of the site are, and existing soils of the property, and then the site is located on a FEMA flood map. And then, we develop a watershed map based on this. What is shown, the black dashed outline, is the watershed, and what is, what water is going to be, and runoff is going to be contributing to the site, which in this map is down on the left-hand corner. And then, we set up a pre-developed model of the site. This can be done in several different ways. We don't specify the type of model that has to be set up, or the procedure that needs to be used. It can be done in a computer model, or it can be done by hand also. In this case, there are four, the watershed is divided into four different areas. It's going down to a, it all discharges eventually, they all come together, and they discharge into a roadway ditch, which is 5L down the bottom, down bottom left of the page. And these models can get rather complicated. This is just another model. It has a couple different watersheds, and it's also, there is an existing pond on the site which would attenuate the runoff, so there's less runoff, and that's important because we cannot increase the runoff in the site. So, therefore, with the pond, with the existing pond on there, there's going to be less runoff. And when I say less runoff, there's, I'm talking about the rate of runoff. There is going to be an increase in volume, but the rate is what we're really looking at.
Tim, can I interrupt you and ask a question for a minute?
Yep.
Now, we're calling this the Ascension Parish Drainage Impact Study. Is this conducted by the developer or by the parish?
Uh, yes, it'd be conducted by the developer.
By the developer, by a licensed engineer.
Yes, by a licensed, and then they submit it to us, and then we review it and take a look at it.
So, so far, have we talked about everything the developer's done so far, including the modeling, the watershed map, and everything else? Or is that something you're looking, or you're producing?
Well, the developer would produce it, and I'd look at it and get an idea on, you know, and whether I agree with what they're saying or not.
Out of curiosity, watershed maps here in such a flat area can be really tricky to figure out, so you have to do a lot of field reconnaissance for that. Do you guys actually go out and take a look, make sure water is flowing in the direction that it appears on the, by contours?
Uh, we have maps, the Ascension Parish has a LiDAR map, and just based on, it just shows shading that shows where the lower ground, how the ground flows in the lower ground. We really depend on the engineer, the developers' engineers, to actually produce these maps. And then, we also, we look at, you know, other maps that they have, and the USGS puts out maps also, the United States Geological Society.
So, the developers' engineer will do the watershed map based upon how, whatever method they use to do that, either analyzing the contours or going out and doing field reconnaissance and determining what flow comes into that watershed and what doesn't.
Uh, yes, yep.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So, then, from the information that we developed on that, we have from the watershed map, we developed how much flow is coming into the site, and that's based on the information that we had before, on the soils in the site, what's the existing use of the site, how much is being absorbed into the soil, and how long it takes for the water to get down to the outlet of the site when, a point where all the water is contributing. And what we're showing here is a hydrograph. I know you can't, can't read it at all, but the main important part is the blue line there that shows the water, that's based on a time, and you can see the water is how it increases over time, and then decreases once a peak is reached.
Tim, what frequency of rainfall event do the developers use?
Uh, in Ascension Parish, we require a 10-year storm. They usually look at 100-year storm also for overflows, but that is not required by Ascension Parish.
Yeah, and I think, and that's typical of communities everywhere, that you can't, you can't design for hurricane, storm events, you can't design your drainage system for that. So, we designed something that's, we use something that's reasonable, and a 10-year storm is pretty reasonable.
Uh, yes, and that's how most communities design their storm drains for 10-year storm. Some of the detention basins are designed based on the 2, 5, 10, 25, 100-year storm.
Okay, so we need to make that clear, that there are going to be storm events that are unprecedented, and, well, maybe I shouldn't say unprecedented, we seem to have had everything here, but there are going to be major storm events that the system was not designed to retain all the flow within the drainage, ditches or within the drainage culverts, and there will be some occasional overflow.
Uh, yes, yep.
What we want to try to, and street flooding is one thing, what we want to try to always avoid is home flooding, obviously.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
So, then, this information that we've developed is brought into a pre-developed map, basically more of a close-up map of what exactly is going on at the site itself, and how much water is leaving the site, which is represented by a Q, a flow, 10, 10-year storm, and that's, so in this case, it's 14 CFS cubic feet per second leaving the site. And again, that is a rate of flow that we're concerned with. So, then, we look at the, what they're planning on developing in the, on the site. In this case, there is a detention pond on the top and the left-hand side, and the building and parking is towards the right, at the center on the right of the, of the site. And then, they'd set up a post-developed model. In this case, we have three areas going into the new detention pond, which discharges into the roadside ditch, 5L, down at the left-hand bottom of the, of the page, and one, one of the watersheds is discharging directly into the, into the roadside ditch. And again, this is just a more, more complicated model. We have a couple of different watersheds that we're concerned with, and this is all draining into a pond also. And then, they just have a, this is the pond summary. I know you can't read it, but just, just to show you, what, we take into account the volume of the pond, and by the outlet structure, that limits the amount of water that can be going off at one time. And then, it's calculated out what the peak elevation in the pond is going to be. And so, then, we just compare the two different models, pre-developed model against the post-developed model. And again, in the pre-developed model, we had a flow discharge coming off the site at a 10-year storm of 14 CFS cubic feet per second. And then, after the site is developed, with the pond, it's reduced to 13 CFS. So, we say, you know, that, that is good, that they're reducing the flow, the discharge. And so, basically, the land use, it's going to happen, there's going to be potential impacts, and we just got to reduce those impacts and make sure that no one is negatively affected. So, if you have any questions, I can answer it.
Last time we met, I asked for this presentation because there was a conflict between what the engineer said about where the water went, and what the neighbors said actually happens when it rains. And I would assume we're going to have those conflicts over and over. How do we, how do we rectify that, or at least address them?
Yes, as I tried to explain in the, in the, in the meeting last month, and I talked to that resident again the other day, just to, you know, clarify that this was only a preliminary study, and it's just so that they can move forward with their, their more detailed design. And as the, when the construction plans come in, we'll review them more closely, and also, that's not the end of the thing either. Even once those are approved, we work with the developer, the engineer, the contractor for any issues that come up during, during construction. And they don't look at it as like, okay, we got approval, we can do what we want. You know, they said it was okay, we're going to do it. That's, if it's causing problems and we didn't pick it up, go work with us to get it, to get it resolved.
The point I made earlier about the watershed is important because all the calculations, everything you assume and everything you design for is based upon your, the approval or the correctness of the watershed information in the first place. So, it's... So, um, it's really important if, I, I, you know, I wasn't sure how we want about doing these things. If we depend upon the, the licensed engineer to do it, um, that's good, um, because his reputation or her reputation is, is at stake. But I would hope that we would also, um, talk to residents and, um, make sure that, uh, there aren't some assumptions that were made in, in the determination of a watershed that are, that are just incorrect, uh, not suggesting that there are. Uh, but like I said, in, in, in la- in flatlands in Louisiana, it's very difficult to figure out watersheds, and in fact, depending on the rainfall event, watersheds can change, and water can flow in, in different directions. So it's a tricky thing, it's, it is complicated, uh, the modeling's complicated. I have a lot of confidence in it, don't get me wrong, but I think that, um, at, at the point to, to, to make and the point at, at which, uh, the most important decisions are made are when the, when the watersheds turn in the first place. So if we could, um, find some way to, I, I'm not sure what we do at that point, Tim, uh, we get the engineer's report, we see the watershed they've developed. I, I, if we had the staff and the money and the time to do it, I'd love to, you know, do a little more determination of whether that watershed, not, just how good that watershed information is, but other than that, I think this was a, a good report and, uh, and I, and I'm, I have a lot of confidence in, in, in modeling and the engineering aspect of it. And I think, uh, the frequency of storm event, everything else is, is fine, uh, it's appropriate, and it's what most communities use. It's, um, it's not, it's conservative enough, um, for, for this area, you know? So I'm, thank you for doing it, the report. Uh, I think it's well done, appreciate it.
Okay, good.
I have another question.
Yeah, I would, uh, agree with you, this, I mean, this is all theory, and we have to work with the residents. The residents know what, you know, better, have a better idea and understanding of what is happening out there.
Yeah. Does the, uh, twenty-four-hour flow of eight-and-a-half-inch storm, does that, uh, suppose that where it drains is empty? Or that it could be full and there's nowhere for the water to go?
Uh, well, they would, they look at where it's draining into, and they have, they apply, uh, a tailwater to that if they expect that there is going to be an impact, if it's where it's draining to. And also, it, it is taken into account the absorption of the soils, so there is a certain amount that is assumed that it's gonna be absorbed already in, in the soils. Uh, so, and so much has already occurred, and so it's determining how much runoff there is gonna be.
The, the whole idea of retention ponds, people, and a lot, it's hard to understand that if you're not in the business, I guess, but a retention pond always has water in it. There's always some water in retention ponds, uh, almost all. It's just some water.
Well, and also-
The idea is that there's storage between where the water normally is, and when there's rainfall event, there's a lot of storage in there. That's the idea of the retention pond, to reduce the rate of, of flow to, to, for the pond to store water and to, and to release it more gradually, uh, so as not to overburden the downstream, uh, effect of the, of the rainfall event, so that's how they, they work, but-
Yep. And also, there, there are two different types of detention ponds, there's dry ponds and wet ponds. Wet ponds are designed to always-
We mostly have all, all wet ponds here, though, don't we?
Uh, mm, I'd say mostly, but they, they kinda go both ways.
Residential retention ponds are mostly wet ponds.
Uh, yeah, usually.
I mean, I, I've seen a lot of commercial retention ponds that are dry.
Yep, yep.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Any other comment? Um, I just wanna, uh, mention again that we're not having the joint planning and zoning meeting afterwards because, uh, it was advertised incorrectly, and we're just not gonna have it this week. We'll have it next month, I mean. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't we have this agenda?
No.
That ends off?
Yeah, that's my statement, we're not having that.
Okay.
So, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move for adjournment.
A second.
A second?
Aye, favor?
Aye.
Others opposed?
Are you kidding?